Hello, I'm Keith Nichols with Marion County Funeral Home. I'm here with our manager Glenda Cochran and owners Rick and Jane Chambliss. It has always been our purpose to provide the most caring and compassionate service we can at the most reasonable prices. So we feel it imperative to offer a pre-need option that will fit the needs of the people and area we serve. So why should we pre-plan? To make sure your wishes are met, provide peace of mind for you and your family, to relieve hurried and impulsive decisions at one of the most difficult times in our lives, to also relieve a great financial burden on our family. We plan for a number of things in our lives, so let's not forget one of the most important, our final arrangements. For a limited time, we're offering your choice of a $6,495 service or a $6,995 service. We're here because we care, so give us the opportunity to sit down and answer any questions you might have regarding pre-planning and the services we provide at Marion County Funeral Home in Hamilton, 921-5777, and follow us on Facebook.
From a small dent to major collision repair, Hamilton Paint &amp; Body is here for you. Owners Kim Guin would like to say thank you for your business.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of 12 miles and 22 consumers on the road from Guin to Sulligent. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at 205-921-6712.
Your story starts at Bevel State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Bevel State has an opportunity that is right for you, with five locations serving seven counties. You don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career tech and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.
Our leading order, this will be the last meeting that this council will be providing city government for you all. Some will be returning for the next administration, but several of us won't be. We'll, we might have some comments later about our time that we went through COVID and the times we were out of water and how unpleasant those times were. But we had some great memories, also everything was not a pandemic and everything was a crisis. And so we've had some tough moments and we've had some very, very good moments to serve our community. Welcome all our guests tonight. We're proud to have you with us, the newly-elected officials here, our media is here, our accountant is here, and we'll be talking to him in just a little while. Had just a few public service announcements I wanted to make tonight. The Buddy Hatcher River Fall Festival will be held in Hamilton this coming Saturday, the 25th. I believe it kicks off around 9:00 a.m. and last whole mid-afternoon, maybe 3:00, 4:00 in the afternoon when everybody kind of winds it down. So everybody come out and enjoy our festival. I've forgotten how many consecutive years we've had the Buddy Hatcher River Fall Festival, but it's a, it's a great festival, one of the recognized festivals in this whole region that draws people from all over, a lot of folks out of Mississippi and different places come here to enjoy Hamilton. On November 3rd, we'll have the swag-in of our new council at the police station, and we'll talk about moving our meeting site in a minute officially. We've proclaimed Red Ribbon Week for October 23rd through the 31st, and this is awareness of drug prevention activities that we might participate in our schools and our community to help folks to make good decisions about their lives at a young age and help those that might be trying to come through rough times that maybe have gotten involved in some kind of drug activity. Red Ribbon Week is just a week of healing and a week of proclaiming that our city opposes the drug lifestyle, and we strongly recommend that people refrain from taking illicit drugs that might be habit-forming and troubling for their lives and their futures. So the proclamation has been made for the week of the 23rd through the 31st of October. The Growing Alabama Project kickoff meeting for tomorrow has been canceled due to illness. I heard from Tom this morning, one of our engineering people has a very sick mother in the hospital at Land and Tutton. They hear, so it'll be rescheduled and re-announced hopefully in the next few days, and that was supposed to be tomorrow, so that has been canceled. And I just wanted to make that known. And with that said, I'd like to ask you to stand with me for an indication and a pledge of weakness to what you have in mind. That's great. I pray to heaven we thank you for just all the things that you do for our community. Lord, we thank you for blessings that we don't even recognize sometimes, and we know that you're the author of the good things. We ask you to be with us in this meeting tonight, that decisions might be made that would be beneficial to our community going forward. Of course, each time we assemble, we might do things in the will of you. We pray for our national leaders, that we might achieve a settlement of our government affairs in Washington where we can carry on and make sure that our government operates as it should and functions. Lord, we thank you for leaders across our nation. Thank you for the service they render. We ask that you will be with this nation and continue to bless us as we go forward. Christ's name, my prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under the oath indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have several things on our agenda tonight. We'll start with item one, and that's the recommendation to schedule the meeting for November 3rd, and it will be moved to the Hamilton Police Department Auditorium at Old City Hall, and it'll be convened at 6:00 p.m. This will be the organizational and swag-in ceremonies for our new administration. We need a motion and second to move that.
I'll say it.
Ross made the motion, Scott second. All in favor of that? Okay, thank you. Item two is a recommendation that Glenda Fox be placed to serve on the Hamilton Library Board. She will be replacing Molly Lunsford. However, the next public library board wishes to keep Molly Lunsford as an honorary member. If all that would be in keeping with your will, we'd like to make a motion and second to do these actions. She made the motion, we, Scott Robertson made the second. All those in favor of working with our library board? Thank you. That will put Ms. Glenda Fox as a new member and Ms. Molly Lunsford as an honorary member. She's been with the library board a long, long time. Item three is a recommendation to approve the minutes of the October 6th city council meeting. Got a motion from Ross, we need a second. From sheary, okay. All those in favor will approve in those minutes? Thank you. Item four is a recommendation to pass a resolution 2025-10-20 for the city of Hamilton enter into an agreement with the state of Alabama Department of Transportation for a sidewalk improvement project. The sidewalk set for improvement will be along the east side of Menutown Street South from Bexar Avenue to the Alabama Highway 17. Thus, these improvements will be from the TAO program, that's the Transportation Alternatives Program, and will be a federal grant with an 80-20 split with the city of Hamilton. Project expenses to the city will be an estimated around $200,000. The total expected cost of the project will be $922,000. If everybody would want to move forward with their sidewalk project, we'd need to adopt that. Got a motion from Wade Williams on that matter, need a second. Scott Robertson, second. All those in favor of moving forward with that project? Thank you. Item five is a recommendation to allow city clerk Angela Owen to open a new non-interest-paying checking account with First National Bank with the TAO sidewalk project. And we'd need a motion and second for that. Got a motion from sheary, need a second. Second from Scott, all those in favor? I will abstain from that, please. Item six is a recommendation to declare certain vehicles and equipment a surplus no longer usable by the city of Hamilton, allowing them to be sold either on gov deals or on sale via. At least these automobiles will be provided on Monday if ready to go.
I did not get the list.
Okay. All right, this was some surplus we're going to declare, but we didn't get the descriptions in in time, so I'd ask you all to let me table this motion.
I'll make a motion to table.
Okay. Got a motion and second to table this place unless a surplus, all those in favor? Thank you. We'll catch that one later. All right, and item seven is a recommendation to approve the purchase of installation of a mapping system for the Hamilton Water Department that will show all the accurate locations of water and sewer lines throughout the city. Estimated cost of the project will be $15,000. I said 10 to 15, but top to 15, and a monthly service fee after it's produced, $80,000. From a, end discussion on this before we vote.
I'll make a motion.
I think something we need, we got a motion, you vote on it?
I'll say it.
Second. Got a second from Scott Tyra, all those in favor of this? Making our new maps, new works, I think it's going to help us straighten, and we can actually keep them updated, we've got the ability to keep them updated once we get the maps in place. Item eight is a recommendation to approve the pay scale for the Hamilton Water Department employees retroactive to October 21st, '24, for the pay rates that went into effect November '24. However, the pay scale itself was not specifically approved with the budget for the 12 months ending September 30th, '25. That's the pay scale is as follows for the shop folks. Irregular pay would be 1893, grade one would be 2032, regular 1867, grade one 1991. This is compared to regular employee to one that's achieved their grade, 1841, 1950, 1816, 1908, top, if you got grade one, 1790 to 1867, 1764, and this one would top out 1764, four and then $1 above the regular employee, 1993, that's topped out. Water treatment, wastewater treatment operators, grade three and four, 2372, top out $29, 2259, top out $2785, 2145, top out $2674, 2032, top out $2344, new hire 1816. New hire already certified, $27. Chief operators, $1 above, top out at 2472 with top out $30. Manager salary, 66560. And we need a motion to adopt that tonight.
Motion.
A motion, need a second. A second, all those in favor? Thank you. Item nine is a recommendation to fulfill city ordinance 2018-1 retroactive November 1st, '22. Under this ordinance, the city of Hamilton previously paid a total of $135,000 annually to the benefit of the three Hamilton schools. However, this amount was included in the increased amount of $300,000 annually to the Iggy Foundation for the benefit of the Hamilton schools pursuant to the agreement reached with the Marion County Board of Education earlier that year. This is something we never really correct, and we knew in our minds what we did, but we didn't put it on the books, so tonight I'll make it official.
I'll make a motion.
A motion and a second.
I'll say it.
A second, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Now, we have a presentation from CPA Allen Catrill to review the proposed budget for the Hamilton City for fiscal year, Hamilton Department for fiscal year '25, '26. Allen, you have the floor.
Thank you, Aaron. We went over some of these figures in our work session. We corrected a few things, one of them said that the $200,000 that was placed in the jail project. And this year's budget reveals, it's going to be a year where you, everything's going to be project managed. We've got about $3.9 million worth of projects in our budget, about $1.5 million for water, and about $2.3 million, $2.4 million for the city. And without those projects, we'd actually have a surplus of $800,000, $2.00 million. But we do have those projects, and depending on how those are managed, places we've got $2.00 million in there for the frac, like you mentioned the other day, may not take that much, may not do as much as we think, but it's in the budget just in case, and it'll be managed in those projects. We're going to have a surplus of revenues over expenses of $800,000, $2.00 million somewhere in there. But managing those products, projects is going to be, what next year will be a big part of next year, is having to manage those projects. $1.5 million, like I said, on the waterside. If the waterside didn't have any projects, we would probably, we're budgeting, we'd have to give them over $800,000 in such, if we gave them over $900,000 this year, that they did. So that's what is important about this budget, you mentioned, the handout I told you about, the raises that are included in this year's budget. And like I said, it's going to be a project management year, all these big projects that we have, and we have a lot of them, and some of them we have to do to get grant money. It's just our share of the projects, and we've got about a $13 million budget. We've got about $11 million of revenue through the city of Hamilton, and then the Hamilton Water Department is going to throw in about another $3 million on top of that of revenues. So we're going to look anywhere from a $13 million plus of revenues coming in with a loss, operating loss on the waterside, and probably $800,000 to $900,000 just like this And we will have a surplus on the city side of four projects of about $1.5 million. Then subtract that $800 that we placed to give the water, and it's going to be about $1.00 million net surplus to the city, the four projects. We've budgeted just the projects on the waterside that are now in progress, and I know we had some more projects that thinks needs to be done, and so we'll be handling those as well and determining which of these projects we can afford to do and which one we might have to put off, or finance and the different ways.
Yeah, there's different ways to do it. Some of it can be financed, some of it could be put off, and if it doesn't actually happen this fiscal year, then I don't think that's necessarily kicking the can down the road either, just if you look at your priorities and we've adopted a deficit budget the last two years, I know, and we, we still got money in the bank, and we built our track and paid for it, and so the revenue flow is not bad for our city at all.
Yeah, we did not incur any debt on the frac project so far.
Yeah, we haven't borrowed any money in the last two administrations, as a matter of fact, and paid a lot of our bond debt off during that period of time, so it's been, it's been a good, a good period of time.
Yeah.
Even though we had some hardships along the way.
We probably employed 110, 115 people, payroll varied for the time, big payroll.
We really appreciate you getting this budget prepared for us, I want to. Any questions with Allen before we vote on adopting our budget for the year? We'll need a motion and a second to adopt our 25, '26 budget.
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion from Ross, need a second. Second from Scott, all those in favor of adopting the budget? Thank you very much. Just wanted to take a couple of minutes to thank our community for the support I've felt in the last two administrations, and really, really thank you so much from the bottom of my heart. It's been a pleasure to serve the city of Hamilton. I am entering into my retirement phase of my life, which has brought me to some new thinking, and I don't really know what to do, it always works, so I'll figure it out along the way, but I've enjoyed serving. Anybody else, like I said, we're...
I'd like to say, I may get choked up, but I was first elected in 1992, so that's over 30 years ago. Served with three different mayors, ETC on, Ken Mayes, and Steve Logan. I'd office a while, come back as mayor. I'd office a while, come back as councilman. So five terms, and this is ending year '21 tonight, but I've made a lot of friends, saw a lot of things happen in all those years, and really, really enjoyed it, and I enjoyed all of it, but most of the time it was really good. I enjoy serving this group. One thing that we've done together is we've got along really, really well, and that's important. Now, sometimes, John Bentley was our attorney many, many years ago, he said, you know, sometimes you're just going to agree to disagree, and that's okay, if things comes up the next four years and you're not always in house, it's okay. After the meeting, just get up, shake hands, and move on to the next meeting. But you're inheriting a good thing, we've got really good department heads in each department, the best I've seen in a long time, good employees in each department, and so I think you're coming into a good situation, and actually, the city's been doing better than I've ever seen. I've served when times was pretty hard, and we've not really had any difficult times. We spent a lot of money, but we haven't put our city in any kind of financial stress. So even though you're going to inherit a budget that's deficit, you don't have to do all those things, you just do what you think is best, and let some things ride to the next year. Each city department, these last five years has been improved tremendously. You shouldn't have to buy a lot more equipment there with department, we've already done all that. Some of that equipment will last for years and years and years. And also, I've served with all those mayors, I also served with four different city clerks, start with Bubba Parton, Mayor William Hur. She passed away in her first term with DT, just shortly after getting elected. Then he hired Miss Sue Page, worked until she retired, and then Jan Williams worked until she retired, and then I was there with Brittany and Angela, and we've had excellent city clerks. You cannot make it without a city clerk. It's the most important position in this town, and nothing happens in this city that don't go through her office eventually, so she's very important. Thank you, Angela. But thank you to this council, we've grown, care about each other, we've seen a lot of things happen, five years, lives without water, it's pretty hard, but we'll make it, and we're better now than we've ever been. Our water departments are better, sure they need some improvements, but they've been stuff done, it's improving and getting improved, so to this group, mayor, thank you, and thank you to this council. This is part of my last meeting, but after 30 years, I think I've enjoyed it, and I appreciate everyone, I appreciate the city for letting me serve, so thank you.
Cut, want to say a word?
I just want to say one, just thanks for my, my family for allowing me to do this, and I mean, it does take some time away from me, and I've enjoyed it, I care about this city, I want to see it do the best that it can, and to the new council members coming on, the new mayor, collect, I wish y'all nothing but the best, just to, you know, put Hamilton first, and let's, let's keep this thing moving forward, and I challenge y'all to that, and be praying for you. A lot of times, when we have meetings, sometimes, you know, we couldn't go home and discuss nothing, and you have to kind of keep it, you know, inside of it, and that's tough, and, you know, a lot of tough decisions had to be made, and like you said, Wade, there was times we probably, probably argued back and forth a little bit about things, but we all kind of came to a common ground and agreed that, you know, make sure we're doing what's best for Hamilton, and to all the employees, I've enjoyed working with each and every one of them, and we've got the best, there is, and just thank you for the opportunity of serving in Hamilton, I've really enjoyed it, and enjoyed working with each and every of y'all up here, and Allen, thank you for all you've done, and helping us over the years too, and to our media, thank y'all for always being here to cover our council meetings and just, you know, that way getting the word out what's going on, and so, but that's all I got. Ross, I guess it's up to you now.
I'm going to take a different approach from mine, I'll come to the podium, and that'll make sense in just a second, because I've kind of got a few areas I want to cover, because this is probably, unless something happens, our, our last meeting here in my lifetime, to come before in this capacity and speak to the citizens and to my fellow members. First of all, I just want to say how big of an honor it's been to serve on the city, on the city council. I was 18, you know, if y'all can believe that, whenever I was elected, I was the youngest to do it, and, you know, that shaped me a lot, so I, first of all, I just want to thank the citizens for allowing me to do that. Of course, we have to give everything that we do, and thanks to the Lord for allowing us to, to sit in these seats, and for you guys that'll be joining the rest of them in just a few weeks. There's not a whole lot that I can add as far as our time, but there have been some, some really good times, we've accomplished a lot over the last five years, and there's also been some, some pretty troubling times, me and Scott Robertson were talking about them earlier. Of course, just echoing with the rest of the, rest of the council, said, you know, to our department heads, our consultants that we use, and our, our dedicated employees, thank y'all for, for honestly making our job a little bit easier, and to the new council members, you know, rely heavily on those guys, they're your experts in those departments, they're going to know exactly what goes on day to day. But more than all, the knowledge that we've gained, and especially for myself, you know, being so young coming in, I didn't, I'd never looked at what a budget looked like, and so, you know, getting to learn about all that, so the knowledge that I obtained... So the knowledge that I obtained over the last five years has definitely molded me into the man that is able to stand before you. To the new council, I want to congratulate y'all. In a few short weeks, you're going to be sitting up here and making decisions. And I joked with Frankie before the meeting. George Washington told John Adams, "Tag your in on his way out," so I got to do that. But I want you to remember that it's the people who elected you. You were not selected by this council. You were voted on. They went to the polls to put you in the seats. There's going to be several times when you're able to appease all 7,000 people that live in this city. There's going to be some times where you don't know how to vote and don't know how to handle situations. Times when you might have to vote alone, like all of us have. It's in these times when we need to rely heavily on wisdom from the Lord. The Lord tells us in the Book of James that if any of you lack wisdom, let him ask of the Father, who gives it all to you liberally, without reproach. Stand firm in your decisions. Let your yes be yes and your no be none. And also ask, as you join Ms. Sherry and Scott, to keep the progress that's been built over the last five years going. And if there's anything that I can do for you, I'm one call away. And I'll be more than happy to help you understand something if you have a question of what we've done over the last five years. And finally, since I'm kind of transitioning now, I kind of fell into this next role. It's to my fellow citizens over the next four years. I hope that I represented you all well. I tried my hardest to vote on every issue and what I thought was best for the City of Hamilton and to keep the city moving forward. I know because you all went to the polls and voted in this next group debate, we'll continue to do the same. So what I ask is that you do two things for this council. First, let them know when you're appreciative of what they've done. Too oftentimes, elected officials get bogged down because all we hear is negative and whine. And I can't believe you voted that way. And a lot of times, we just need to thank you. Hey, thank you for doing that. Thank you for paving my road. Thank you for giving the employees raises. So to my citizens, do that. If you ask sincere questions, I know that the council that is coming in will give you a sincere answer. And finally, one thing that I think we all overlook is to pray for this council. Use the example that Paul wrote to Timothy when he says, "Therefore, I assert" first of all supplications, prayers, and intercessions, giving thanks for all men, for kings, and all who are in authority, that we may lead a quiet and peaceful life in godliness and reverence. Thank you all for the last five years, council. Thank you for allowing me to serve with you. And may God bless this great city.
Mr. Turner, do you have anything to add to our meeting tonight?
I would just like to say that I appreciate the opportunity the last couple of years getting to work with you. Sherry and I both kind of started at the same time. And it's just a great, great group of people. Y'all are big, great leaders and very great to work with. And it's been a pleasure just doing things that's on behalf of the city and, you know, I mean, being able to move forward with all these different things. And I just, I appreciate every one of you. I remember Ross and I the night that we had to prepare for the press release, you know, until the wee hours of the night. And just, I think it's the thing that people don't realize is how much time and effort these people actually put into trying to solve the problems and the future of this city that y'all see. Y'all see all the late night calls and all the worrying and taking the calls. And there's so much time and effort that they put into it. And I greatly appreciate that, and I appreciate that y'all being so good at work with us.
Any further words? If not, we'll leave a motion. You got a word? All right.
I just want to say thanks to the mayor and this group, Angela and Jeremy. They bought me on two years ago, and I've enjoyed being a voice for our people. And they've allowed me to do that, which I really appreciate it. I want to say thank you to our citizens for giving me four more years to be your voice. I really appreciate it, and I'll do my very best. Thank you.
I've enjoyed these last five years for sure. And I can't add to anything that these guys have said. Thank you to the citizens for another four years. I'm just, I'm eager to get out of this new group.
Angela, you got anything to add?
No, I do appreciate the opportunity. I have enjoyed it for the most part sometimes. Not so much, but it's good. We've tried to work together, and I really feel like it's been for the best. I wish all of you a lot of luck and happiness in the future and in your timely retirements. I hope they get paid that long enough.
About time. With that said, we don't need a motion.
I'm going to make this last one.
I'll make a second.
I'll make a motion for a turn.
Do we have a second? Scott and Scott made the motion and second. All those in favor of the turn? Thank you. We appreciate y'all being here tonight.
Hello, I'm Keith Nichols with Marion County Funeral Home. I'm here with our manager, Glenda Cochrane, and owners Rick and Jane Chambliss. It has always been our purpose to provide the most caring and compassionate service we can at the most reasonable prices. So we feel it imperative to offer a preneed option that will fit the needs of the people and area we serve. So why should we pre-plan? To make sure your wishes are met, provide peace of mind for you and your family, to relieve hurried and impulsive decisions at one of the most difficult times in our lives, to also relieve a great financial burden on our family. We plan for a number of things in our lives, so let's not forget one of the most important, our final arrangements. For a limited time, we're offering your choice of a $6,495 service or a $6,995 service. We're here because we care, so give us the opportunity to sit down and answer any questions you might have regarding pre-planning and the services we provide at Marion County Funeral Home in Hamilton. 921-5777, and follow us on Facebook.
From a small dent to major collision repair, Hamilton Paint and Body is here for you. Owners Kim Guin would like to say thank you for your business.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of 12 miles and 22 consumers on the road from Guin to Sulligent. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at 205-921-6712.